All right, everyone. All right, call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome, everyone. Glad to see everybody here. For the first item on our agenda is public comment. This portion of the meeting is specifically set aside for comments from the public who are asked to limit their comments to two minutes. Any person interested in providing public comment via email should email publicmeetings@rockyhillct.gov prior to 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting to have their public comment read into the record. Do we have anybody here that has any comments to provide? Seeing none, do we have anything?
No.
And nothing via email? All right, moving forward. The next item on the agenda is appointments and resignations. I do actually have one edit to make for this. In our last meeting, I mistakenly made the appointment to the senior liaison committee of Councilor McKesh, but is actually Councilor Van Luling. That's going to be on that committee. I believe that's the only change I have. Do you have any?
No.
No change?
Anything?
No additions.
Nope. Okay, so that's all we've got for appointments and resignations. We are still working on, and we've received some submissions for the rest of the boards and committees and commissions. It's good to see a lot of people coming in there, so I'm sure we'll have some more of those in the coming meetings. Next on the agenda, approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the town council meeting minutes from November 17th.
Second.
Well, we need a first. Okay, we have a first. And we have a second.
You have a second.
Do we have any discussion, any changes? Anything? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention. Okay, thank you. Subcommittee reports, this will probably also be pretty quick. Finance committee has...
No report, we're meeting next week.
All righty, and government ops.
No meeting.
Do you know when is the next meeting for that? Is it also the 15th?
Nope, 15th?
Yeah. Is it the 15th? Okay. Public safety.
No report, we're meeting prior to the next council meeting.
The 15th as well, okay. Senior liaison.
Yeah, I do have a report. We haven't met yet, but we are in the process of seeking seniors for appointment as non-voting members of senior liaison. We plan on meeting the fourth Thursday of the month, starting in January, and we're going to move to every other month. And we're considering holding meetings at 4:00 p.m. We'll confirm that. I want to make sure everyone on the committee can make that time before we commit to four o'clock. I do have a couple announcements from Ms. Hicks, who's the director of human, senior, and youth services. Human Services will present a holiday cabaret on Saturday, December 6th, featuring holiday music, Broadway hits. It should be a night of fun and laughter. And the event is the first fundraiser for the Hill House Players, which is the Rocky Hill Theater Group, and is to be held in Room 1 of the community center. Doors will open at 6:30 and curtain rising at 7:00. Human Services also wanted to report that people, a person who is alone for the holidays can have a meal delivered for Christmas and Easter. They already did Thanksgiving. Anyone who may be alone for the holidays, if you want to be included, contact Crystal at 860-258-2799. And other services, such as Energy Assistance, Operation Fuel, you can also contact Crystal. And the Food Pantry at 673 Old Main Street is open on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, 9 to 4 p.m. And from the Senior Center from Gina Moreno, some past events or recent events, 11:12, we had a veterans lunch. It was a huge success. 120 people attended, over, at least half were veterans. And Cedar Mountain donated 100 apple pies, and Maple View, 100 pumpkin pies for the annual Grab and Go for seniors. So that also occurred right before Thanksgiving. And on the 26th, 40 Hart School of Music students performed a mini version of the Nutcracker for over 60 seniors that were at the center that day. Special lunch events coming up in December, on the 3rd, Sounds of the Seasons, where Rocky Hill High School Triumph students will be performing. And there are a few seats left for that event. On 12/17, there's a holiday special with KC Sisters to perform. That's on a waitlist. And on December 31st, New Year's Eve Day, Surf and Turf with Doop Band Jukebox, that's also a waitlist. More events will be forthcoming in January. That's it.
Oh, that's it? That's only like 45 items at the Senior Center coming up for the next couple of weeks?
Without a meeting.
Yeah, that's... And you haven't even had a meeting yet.
Well, that was, we got the reports from, they wanted things out for the public.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Well, they're already all waitlisted, just about. But moving on, land acquisition, farmland preservation.
No report, our first meeting is next month.
All right, and I think that is also something where we typically appoint a couple of members of the public as well, so I think we're working on that in the next...
Just a comment.
Next couple of weeks.
I think your next meeting would be December 30th?
That was canceled.
Okay.
All right. And liaison to the state rep and state senator, do you have anything from...
Yep, we've got some stuff to report on. I've been in touch with Representative Carrie Wood and Senator Matt Lesser to track some issues that will be affecting us here, and also to talk about some things that have happened in the last couple of weeks. Representative Wood had a well-attended senior luncheon at the Senior Center on November 20th. These are the kind of conversations that help make sure that her work at the Capitol is aligned with the needs of our senior residents. We had an excellent event at the ferry landing to announce the beginning of work on improving the ferry landing, safer pedestrian access, improved lighting, new benches, fencing and gates, and it's going to get started right after the ferry, well, it just closed, so I guess it's getting started in earnest. And we should expect to see a wonderful additional set of quality improvements come spring. We just had an excellent meeting here in the council chamber about a study of the Silvestine Highway Corridor that's going to be going on, and it will affect our part of the corridor that goes down to Parsonage, but most of the study will be in Weathersfield. It's aimed at improving traffic safety, walkability, and economic vitality along our main commercial spine down there, and I will definitely be keeping tabs on where that's going. Finally, Senator Lesser wanted us to know that, as in his role as chair of the Human Services Committee, he is monitoring the federal changes that could raise health insurance premiums and reduce funding for food, housing, and heating assistance, all of which would hit Rocky Hill households, especially seniors and lower-income families right in the pocketbook. The state has set aside $500 million for an emergency fund to help backstop these potential cuts, and he's also tracking new federal policies that threaten permanent supportive housing and could push more people into homelessness, as well as H.R. 1-related cuts to food benefits. His focus is really on making sure that residents of the 9th District and Rocky Hill are protected from these decisions that are made. I'll keep in touch with both of our delegates and keep you up to speed as things move forward.
All right, thank you. And school liaison?
Yes, we have a report. Amy Forsia went to the board meeting, and she took copious notes, and I've tried to shrink it down, so I'll go as quickly as I can. There's a lot of information. First of all, the Board of Ed Officers Chairperson, Jessica LaFredo, Vice Chair Maria Manella, and Secretary Jay Chabra. As a special recognition, on November 11th, several Stevens School staff members, Nora Alvarez, Carolyn Kayowett, Cara Capellano, Rebecca Minow, Lisa Muozio, and Rachel Vergirano, stepped in to save the life of a colleague who was choking, so kudos to them for that quick action. A fall sports update given by Daniel Trudeau, it was his first report as athletic director. He said there are seven teams that qualified for postseason and additional nine individual students advancing in their event, and girls soccer made it to the semifinals, losing to the team who eventually won, so he was quite proud of that. Audience participation, they had Rocky Hill senior from Student Senate and freshmen from the newly-created dance team spoke up and said they would be sending more information, inviting people to future events, and the student council rep also gave additional reports on activities. There are also two Stevens School third graders reported updates on their new school-wide expectations, and I think the last meeting, there were a couple of middle-school students that came to interview us, so I think it's great that we have students that are participating in government. Policy change, policy 4630 Family Medical Leave Act was passed, and it expands FMLA eligibility to non-certified employees. Assistant Superintendent for Personal and Student Services report, in collaboration with Rocky Hill Human Service and Senior Services, there will be a new program of culinary enrichment partnered with the Dream Cafe at Moser School, and more details to come. Also, beginning in January, there'll be a Breakfast with Friends monthly celebration for Dream Cafe and Pathway students, and Dream Cafe has received licensing to be kid-making and selling dog treats, so we'll be there even more often than we are now. Civility Committee has also had its first meeting, and staff will be introduced to the civility framework in December, staff meetings, and they're planning on having student-focused groups, so that will be starting with grades 5 through 12 and having assemblies. Okay, Assistant Superintendent for Finance, apparently it's an issue that comes up quite often. Paraprofessional salaries are currently in deficit due to the needs of students requiring paris support, it's about a $15,000 deficit. There's tuition for in and out of district currently in deficit for magnet schools and students with special needs. This will be offset by the excess cost reimbursement grant we get for the state, but we only get those in January, March, and June, so that's why you have the current deficit. So it looks terrible when you first see it, but it's something that happens all the time. The budget's done eight months before, so it's kind of hard to anticipate who's going to come in, and any student that comes in or that requires additional services or required by law to service, so you get this discrepancy, and eventually we get most of the compensation. There's also a seed grant, which is a special ed grant, and we're filing an application, and it's not competitive, so we get it anyway, and we've been authorized to spend $93,000, and that will be spent on three behavioral specialists for elementary needs and a math tutor at Moser for students in Tier 2 and 3, so I think that's for students that need some support. We also got a set and specific update, which are required for 2024 and 2025, they're required by state and federal law. Dr. Zeta usually goes through all the details during the budget time, so I'm not going to read the whole report, but I did want to do just the assessment, which is based on several criteria, how the students perform, attendance, and graduation, and to be recognized as a school of distinction when you need an 85 or more. And West Hill had an 89.9, so West Hill will be recognized as a school of distinction. And that's my report.
All right, thank you.
Sorry I was so long.
Yeah, no, that's, well, that was their first meeting, you know, I think, for a little bit, and with the new crew, so. The next one is Economic Development Subcommittee, but we rolled that into the Finance Committee. So is that something that we can just remove from future agendas?
We could, yeah.
Okay, yeah, because, I mean, we decided that that was going to just be rolled into the Finance Committee, and so, you know, it's ground that would be covered by Finance if some of that information comes up anyway, so.
So we have three, two rolled up into Finance?
Right, the capital improvements and the Economic Development Subcommittee, because they're ones that only come up every now and then, and they're reviewed by Finance anyway, so it just removes a redundancy. Item number six on the agenda is the consent agenda, we don't have anything there, which brings us to old business, discussion, possible action of shared services and operational assessment.
I have nothing new from the last meeting. We're still working on a draft scope, a first draft scope to get out to the council. I just carry, we just carry it on the agenda, so it's always on the agenda until we're actually finished.
Yeah, once it's on the table, it's on the agenda from there on, correct? Right? And I've been in touch with the Board of Ed Chair, and we're working on trying to circle in Dr. Zio and everything too, so they can be on board, because, you know, one of our, you know, the largest portion of the budget is the Board of Education, so if we're looking at where we're going to look at overall operations, I mean, I think everybody, you know, invite conversation from the other side of the aisle, but I think we're all kind of on board with you looking at some of the larger groups in our budget, that's the largest one. Does anybody else have anything to add?
I just want to make sure, we talked about it last meeting, about sending an official invite to the Board of Ed for the, you know, the final presentation, so to speak, you know, so. Yeah, I think that's majorly important.
Yeah, absolutely, and we need everybody on the same page, and it's not us, you know, to impose our will on the Board of Ed. We also want their input, they're the experts on their own budget, so.
I don't know if you'd consider having a presentation at their Board of Ed meeting, the similar ones that we had, maybe one meeting, they could get a presentation as well, just to further bring them up to speed, and they could ask any questions.
On their own.
Right.
Yeah.
At their pace.
Yeah, I mean, is there one of the, like, one of the organizations that we were looking at that gave us a presentation, would they be able to?
We'll reach out. We had CROG.
Yeah.
And then CLA, which, and then we also had CGR. CGR was more of the, like, the public works, public safety.
Yeah.
And CLA was more of the operational and maybe the board. They are also, they're also our auditing group, too.
Okay.
They know the town well.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think that makes sense.
Ray, if, I know we allocated $60,000, if it, if the scopes go above that and we're bringing in, you know, maybe a third of the pie to Board of Ed, could they contribute towards an additional amount from their budget?
I cannot speak for the Board of Ed.
Yeah, that would be...
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, yeah. Come on, Ray.
I do not recollect.
I mean, if that's something you could run by the superintendent and say, we're working on this initiative, we want to work closely with the Board of Ed and the school district, if this is a large, one-time effort that we want to maximize, you know, the results, if he's got, you know, 10,000 or 20,000 that he could kind of put off to the side somewhere in case it runs over.
It is an efficiency study, so they would gain something from it.
Exactly.
I will ask, and possibly the mayor could talk to the chair.
Yeah, yeah.
Also.
Yeah, I think we're, with the last week being the holiday, you know, it's been hard to, I think, get everybody together in one place, but yeah, absolutely.
Ms. Ray, we also discussed some action items at the last meeting about going back to the CROG and going back to the consultants and asking them their recommendations and, you know, some of their, you know, their suggestions and where they're seeing some of the biggest lift, I guess, as well, I think was our, was a couple of our action items as well. So while you're working, I think it's good to mention that.
Yeah. Anybody else, anything to add? All right, so I think we've got our action items from here to follow through on before our next meeting. All right, moving on to new business, discussion, speed cameras. So just to preface this, and then I just want to get everybody's feedback, is this is something that came up knocking on a lot of doors, talking to constituents, and I know has been a topic before for public safety, and there's some other towns that are doing this. Actually, when DOT was here, they were talking about, Weathersfield has started engaging in some different traffic safety measures involving cameras, and some other neighboring towns are doing it, so I wanted to add this on our agenda to see if this is something that we want to send to the Public Safety Committee to vet this a little bit further, speak with the chief, see if there's any other subject matter experts that we want to talk to, and see what, you know, the new laws are around what's available to do this, because there's a lot of different stuff. It's not just traffic cameras, it's not just speed cameras, it's school bus camera, it's all probably more stuff than I even know, so I just wanted to open it up and see what everybody's thought was on that, and if, you know, we're all in agreement, if we want to send that over to Public Safety Committee to vet a little bit more. Anybody want to start?
I think it makes sense to refer it to public safety, that's the committee, that's their expertise, and speak to the chief, and if they think it's worthwhile pursuing, come back with some kind of proposal for us to begin implementing.
I'll jump in and say that I'm excited about the prospect of what this could do to help with the safety issue we have in town. Being at the doors over the summer, it's very clear that in a lot of our neighborhoods, our residents are not happy with how fast people are running through them and how much they're blowing through stop signs or red lights, and this statute that allows us to do this, we would have to create an ordinance, we would have to make sure that we're dealing with people's privacy in important ways, but I think in this day and age, with the ability of our police officers to not be in every place at all times, it's worth exploring, and I think the Public Safety Committee is the right venue for it.
Ray?
Question, Ray, what's the process for this, for a municipality to, does the municipality apply to the state for it, or how does that go first?
Chief Klett has all the very detailed details, but the process is we have to have a public hearing or several public hearings, and then there is a formal process and procedure, and as was mentioned, an ordinance has to be adopted, again, another public hearing. There are different items, there are red light cameras, there are all sorts of different things, you know, the town would need to pick, you know, which one you want to do, speed, red light, or all of them, you know. Consultant, studies have to be done, I think a study has been done, as far as, you know, the highest speed areas in town, the most appropriate locations for these based on traffic and speed, so that study has to be formalized and put in the proper format. And then probably, I'm hearing this will go to public safety, again, be a public meeting, more information would be distributed to the public, and then at that time, the public safety would vote to either refer positively or refer negatively, or refer pieces of it to the town council.
Can you add this to the agenda for public safety?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for the 15th, I think.
And in terms of, as Zach said, having to create an ordinance, that might would be a separate process, right, or that be part of it, would that be something, how does that process work?
For, to do, to create an ordinance, the town council has to have a public hearing, it has to be legal notice, and a public hearing or more. It's a separate process, but it's still within this particular project.
Okay.
I think it's really worth exploring. I think one of the top concerns of public safety of all our citizens in Rocky Hill is speed. You hear that all the time, always encouraging the police to be in certain streets, certain times, which is impossible for the police to be everywhere all the time, as we just stated, so this may be another resource, but I agree also, public safety should get all the presentations thoroughly vetted out, make a recommendation to the council.
Anybody else?
I would like public safety to win, put up equal amount of weight on privacy, and how are you going to protect customer data, those kind of things. So, yeah, I mean, public safety is the right venue, but I would like to see a lot more on privacy than we have talked about here yet, but, yeah, I think it has to be balanced out. I don't want this to be a free revenue stream for the town. And if we go this route, I would also like the public safety to figure out how that money is going to be used. If it's going to be earmarked to something, or is it going to be going into the general fund? So financial side of this deal, if you were going to go this route. And, yeah, I guess I can only think of two things right now, everything else has been said, so.
Just to note that, I'm sorry.
Just wanted to clarify that the statute's clear about where the money would go to, any revenue has to go back into public safety or infrastructure. It can't go into our general fund. And as far as the privacy side of things, we'll be able to dive into that through this Public Safety Committee, and there's a lot of good information. There are several vendors that are certified with the state, and we would basically go through those.
Yeah, thank you.
So the vendors take your cut from the, like, the equipment to do this, does that come from the vendors, and in return, they take X percentage of the revenue?
I definitely don't want to speak to all vendors, because I'm not familiar with all of the vendors, but that is a familiar...
Yeah, I was asking you and Ray, Ray was shaking his head because...
Basically, that's how it works. They take a percentage of the fine away from, well, if there is a fine, the consultant will take a percentage from that fine.
In perpetuity?
For the contract, length of the contract, yes, yeah.
Okay.
And all that will be clearly vetted and clearly publicized when we go to the public safety. You'll see, you know, how that works very clearly.
Yeah, I think the chief has done some preliminary looking into this, and just in, you know, small conversations with him about it and what he's already looked into, just like on a cursory level. There are state contracts, there's companies that have already been certified by the state for their privacy measures, there's limitations, because obviously, these are all important things, and there's revenue involved in that as well, but we got to keep in mind, like, that's not our primary driver. The primary driver is public safety. And the money aspect, there's less risk, because the vendors typically, and I'm sure there's different contract forms and there's different ways that they do it, but typically the vendor installs it, they kind of like semi-run the system, and a lot of times, it's something that, there's not a long-term contract with it. As long as their initial costs are covered, we could back out somewhere down the line if we didn't like the way that it shook out or whatever, but he seemed pretty optimistic about some of the options that we would have, and to Councilor Van Luling's point, there are limitations on how you... Van Luling's point, there are limitations on how you spend the money, you know, you can't just use it to, do whatever you want, willy-nilly, you know.
I'm clearly not looking to drive revenue on it, I just don't want another private vendor making money on us, is just my concern.
Yeah, yeah.
If you'll humor me, one, one last thought that I should have mentioned prior. Fines under this are capped, 50 and 75 dollars are the fines that we can do on this, and it, it's just, I'm excited to look at this, because it can, it can do a lot of good for the town, if you look at the outcomes in some of the other municipalities that have put them in, so far, it's been pretty good, there's a big warning period that they, that we have to put out when we install these in the first place, and we have to publicize it well, and that period is long enough that folks do get the sense that something's going to change, so I, I'm excited.
And the end result is changing people's behavior, and, you know, if it means a 90% reduction in people blowing through a stop sign, like, that's good.
That's the goal.
Absolutely. All right, so, yeah, do we need a motion to send it to Public Safety, or is it just something we can add to?
Why don't you make a motion?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to send this to Public Safety.
All right. Yep, second, many, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next up is 2026 Meeting Dates. 2026 Meeting Dates, we had one change for the meeting dates proposed, did we, did we settle on a different day for the September 21st meeting?
I suggest that we change that meeting to the 15th, we only meet once in September, so I think the 15th, Tuesday, because that's an open date.
Why not a Monday?
Unfortunately, it's not. The zoning Board of Appeals meeting is.
Oh, that's only, it's not on here?
No.
We got this from, there's other commissions and things that already have those days.
Fair, Fair Rent?
Yeah, and Fair Rent is actually one that, because the attorney has to come to every meeting, and they have, like, advanced notice and timelines, that actually is one of the harder ones probably to move. EDC, the Economic Development Committee, that's one that's a little bit easier to move, on a Tuesday, sustainable on the 28th.
We could do the 22nd also, because land acquisition is 6 o'clock, and it doesn't last, it normally doesn't last an hour.
Right. Oh, yeah, is that one at 6 o'clock and?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay.
If we can keep it to 50 minutes, 55 minutes.
Choreograph that.
Just have to remember that on that day, we are not planning to acquire any land on September 22nd.
No, no presentation.
Actually, that raises a point, Ray, if the Public Safety meetings normally show up prior to the Council meeting, so is that the same, would that be the same day?
Yeah, that was the other question, you know, do you, do you want to just reschedule Public Safety and Government Ops as well?
Well, we'll cash as Government Ops.
From month, from.
It's only for half an hour, right?
Yeah, yeah, 30 minutes.
Let's do the Council, let's schedule the Council meeting, my recommendation is the Council meeting on the 22nd with Farmland, and we'll do something about Public Safety later.
We've got time.
We've got time.
It's in September, so it's nine months away.
Yep.
But it's important to get these ones squared away.
What was, what was wrong with the 15th, I'm sorry?
ZBA.
The zoning Board of Appeals.
Not 15th, sorry.
Oh, it's not on?
Yeah.
All right, I'll move that we adopt the proposed meeting dates with the exception of changing the September 21st, 2026 date to September 22nd, 2026.
A second.
At 7:00.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Who seconded up?
I did.
All right. Well, I'm going to keep this brief, we've got a lot of stuff coming up, but my voice is failing me, so we had a successful Shopee Hill Saturday, 12 local businesses took advantage of that with the Economic Development Commission, but with our staff member, Alondra Main, put it together. I visited about half of those businesses, sadly, I didn't need any more than one tattoo, and there's only so many meals that you can eat during a day, so I didn't get to everybody, but every place that I went to was really busy, and they had had some people come in and talked about it, I think, last time I saw, 40-something passports were picked up at Town Hall, so that's good, there were 40 of those popping around out there. We saw today, the, we had folks come to talk about the Safe Streets for All program that we're working on for the Silas Dean Highway, that should be available through our YouTube page, so feel free to look in that, and there's a survey in there where you can provide input around what's important to you in terms of transportation on the Silas Dean Highway, so keep an eye out for that, basically, they're just collecting info for the study, and there's a timeline for actually making recommendations, which will be closer to summer of next year, so they're collecting data through the end of the year, so I encourage everybody, if you have feedback in terms of what you'd like to see for pedestrian safety particularly on the Silas Dean, then take a look at that. Just want to say thanks to all the department heads for staff, I've been meeting with people over the last few weeks, a couple more appointments over the next coming weeks as well, but, you know, we've got a lot of great people here who really care about this town, so I just wanted to give a shout out to them. Counselor Van Luling mentioned the ferry announcement, they're going to be working on that through the winter, and we're really looking forward to what that's going to look like in the spring, December 13th is Winter Wonderland at the Community Center, there are limited spots available to that, so if you've got anybody that wants to, you know, meet with Santa, send some letters, do some, you know, enjoy Winter Wonderland, check that out on our website and through the Parks and Rec, basically, there's so much going on, they need to book times for you to arrive, and there's only so many times left, so do that soon, because it's December 13th, I touched on it briefly, but we, our, we're filling up Boards and Commissions over the next few weeks, a lot of people from the public have submitted applications for different roles, and I would encourage everybody to continue to do that as we're collecting names, I want to see a lot of new faces, we've got a lot of people that are excited to get involved, and that is also available on Rocky Hill's homepage, if you look under there, there's now a link for volunteer opportunities, I would just encourage both parties to, you know, spread some of the workload around to multiple volunteers, anybody that's, you know, is interested, I would invite them to go there and get involved in the community as much as you can, it is rewarding. The, oh, Counselor Thoreau mentioned it briefly, I believe it was you, that the Hill House Players will have their cabaret starting, is it this weekend? I don't know how many events that they're going to do, but I think there is definitely one this Saturday at like 6:30, 6, 6:30?
Yeah, it's on the 6, 6:30, doors open, 7 o'clock, curtain up.
Great, so that, that's great, that's the second production put on by the Hill House Players, which is our community theater organization, so that's great for more art in town, but along those same lines, on December 10th, the nonprofit in town, Rocky Hill Arts Now will be holding an informational center, or informational meeting at the Community Center at 5:30, that's 5:30 on December 10th, to have a special announcement, but also to get public input on a future public art projects, more information will be coming out about that, from that organization in the coming days, but that's really exciting, so if you're into, if you're into public art, like the theater, then here's another opportunity for you to promote public art in Rocky Hill, and with that, that is my Mayor's report, tossing it over to you, Mr. Carpentino.
Okay, just, just a few operational, more mundane, less fun items, the transfer station staff, they're doing a great job keeping up with all, with the massive demand, just, just a reminder to residents using the transfer station, I know things get very hectic there, and some of the process changes we made over the summer may still add a bit of frustration to, to users, I just ask that the residents continue to maintain their respect to the staffers who are actually there to help them with their issues and, and help them be organized and go to the right places, that's all.
Yeah, and I'll give a shout out to John at the transfer station too, who's, will always engage you in conversation. At any opportunity, so that's it?
No.
Oh, okay, oh, okay, well, you were looking at me like you were done, okay.
Just a blurb from the Town Clerk's office, as you know, Rocky Hill was selected to perform an audit of the three offices in order to check the tabulators for accuracy of the ballots being counted, the audit was done by the moderator and the registrars, and the result, there was no change, we were accurate, so that's, that's good. Community Development Engineering Division, they've been very busy, Weston Sampson has been retained to prepare Connecticut Deep Climate Resilience Fund Planning Grant, we're looking to do drainage studies on four of our most prominent, most problematic watersheds in town, so that will help us hopefully for future planning, for drainage projects, to maybe upgrade our infrastructure to, to accommodate the current water that we're seeing over the past few years, the increase in water from storms. We completed 519 catch basin cleanings by our contractor, Shaw Vac Services, and Dave Palmberg provided training, Dave Palmberg, Environmental Home Project Specialist, provided the town's Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan to the highway, it's part of the MS4 requirements for drainage and siltation and pollution that washes into our catch basins, we're under orders, so is every town to, to eliminate that, so Dave Palmberg did a, a training at the Highway Garage and also at the library for recycling awareness, and also engineering, they have freshened up some of the pavement markings, mostly the crosswalks and center lines throughout town. The Fire Department will be assisting Mission CIT to prepare a New England Association of Fire Chiefs, Federal SAFER Grant, S-A-F-E-R, for firefighters, to purchase personal protection equipment for a number of our firefighters, the New England Chiefs Association, they were awarded a grant through the federal government for 3.0, just over 3, just under 3.38 million dollars for the New, six New England states to apply for this funding, so we'll be looking to purchase some of the personal protection equipment. And one more thing, which is not on my list, I just want to shout out to a Counselor, to Fran, I just can't call you Counselor Fran, everybody knows Fran, he was on Facebook, he was, he, he helped perform a major element for the community gardens, he volunteered to plow up the section of Hayes, the section of Hayes Farm, section of the Rocky Hill Community Farm for our community gardens, it was a large section, and I'm sure the residents thank you for that.
No problem.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you a ton, yeah.
That concludes my report.
All right, well, with no further items on the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?